So hasn't learned.
And, oh no. She actually, they just hired two new associate deets who will start in October, but she said there were people who I normally would have reached out and said, apply for this job, but she's like, these people will suck your soul out. So I'm.
Six thirty P M. Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West here.
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 Sir Rare?
Here.
Mrs. Gray.
Here. We have a motion to approve the agenda for our board meeting this evening.
Sure. Second.
Discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Markey?
Yes.
Mr. Rocky?
Yes.
Sir Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes. I'd like to call for a moment of silence to think about those who've been affected by the recent school shooting in Winder, Georgia, and ask for safety and peace over our community and schools. Thank you. Please stand as Treasurer Todd Schinkel lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Schinkel, I'd like to welcome Superintendent Brian Bailey, who will introduce our student achievement of the month.
All right. So we are fortunate as we start off each school year with our smallest to our tallest. So we're starting off with Mark Cook tonight. We're going to have some Learning Academy updates from summer and before and after school care. And then Mr. Larson's going to give us an update on preschool as well. So I would invite Mrs. Kratzler, our Learning Academy Director, up. This is year two for Angela, and she has done, I would say from, you know, from my end with having somebody take that over for the first time, and apparently an incredible job working through it and keeping the program running. So.
Trying.
Talk a little bit about it, right?
Zach's been a help.
That's right.
Okay. So at the Goshen Learning Academy, we do the before and after during the school year, but we also do our special time, which is our summer camp. This year, we had all of our programs running together. We had an outstanding amount of kids come. Go ahead. So we went from June third to August second. We had a hundred and two students that came and enrolled at the summer camp. We threw K for seven. We kind of lose them off at eighth grade. We had thirty-two K one, we had thirty-eight to three group, and we had thirty-two of our fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh. We tried to make it go around with the summer of STEM this year to try to get off of the Chromebooks and the phones. And so we planned out different STEM activities for each week. Staff was supported, the summer reading programs for each of our buildings. We had thirty-five that completed their Mark Cook reading challenge for the summer, and we had twelve of ours spouting. We had lots of daily communication with the parents. They love coming in and talking with us, and we love talking to them. We had the free lunch for the first three weeks of gym. So lots of our children, I don't remember exactly how many, but lots of them took advantage of that, mine too included, because I didn't want to pack up. We had fourteen new kindergarteners to the district that came and started their schooling with us. So we taught them their way of Mark Cook. So they were very excited to see that some of them were actually in the classrooms, that they were actually going to be it for the school year. We had fifteen STEM activities total to limit our tech time. We did have a little tech time here and there to research our projects, but we also did lots of nature hikes and picnics throughout the campus. This is our Thursday water days. They love this the best. My son there, Jason McQuarrie, he's been here for years with the summer camp. And we had our new water day guy, Damian. He took over this year, so the kids had a blast. These are some of the STEM projects that we did. You can see the teachers actually getting involved, trying to be safe. We didn't want to drop it from the building or anything, so we did it in the classroom. There's the bubbles. They love that one. They tried to get inside the bubbles. And then they also made roller coasters out of straws. And then we made the smores with our outside solar ovens. These are some of the people that we had come out. We had our magician, Jason Jacobs. He comes back every year. The kids love him. We had the pool critter guy this year, brought all of his little friends. And we also had pottery day. They brought out pottery, and all the kids got to take home their own little craft that they made.
Was that part of the pottery day? Is that the one from Home Depot?
No.
Oh.
That was not. That is very different. So what is everyone saying about the Learning Academy? So I sent out a little survey to the parents to see what they had to say. One of them said, thank you so much for your patience, respect, and understanding with my daughter this summer. Goshen Learning Academy has truly helped her stay regulated with fun and educational activities along with structure, which will aid in her transition into the first grade. We are thankful for this program. Another one was Coraline. She was one of our new kindergartners. Coraline had a great time during summer, thanks to all of you. Every day, it was something new and fresh. There was a lot of learning, and I am thankful for enrolling her in this program. Thanks to everyone who made my child's summer memorable. We had one Chuck. It was his first time. He loves summer camp and all the staff. I hope he's able to attend next year. We had another one. I really love bringing Lily into summer camp in the mornings. Everyone knows her and welcomes her kindly. She really enjoys her teachers and the fun activities. I appreciate the feeling of her being safe while I work and knowing the staff will always take good care of her. She has never came home from summer camp upset or in a bad mood. It goes to show how caring and kind all the staff is. Thank you for spending your summer with our kids. Us working parents cannot begin to express our gratitude. Last, Aiden is always excited. He's been here like every year that I've been here. Aiden is always excited to go to Learning Academy summer camp every year. Our families love the staff, and we are very happy with the attention given to each individual child's needs. Aiden is always cared for, and his medication given on time. Aiden has a great time, and the activities are always fun for him. I'm glad the Learning Academy partners with the outside programs, bring more enrichment to the children for the summer. Aiden loves the magic show and the nature hike day. Aiden is a Learning Academy kid, and the staff continues to be amazing every year. We will be back next year. Keep up the great work you guys do for our families. And then just a little bit for the before and after care, since we have started, we've actually had a couple more enrollments since this, but the total so far for our before care is sixty-three students in the morning, preschool through eighth grade. Our AM is split up between thirty-eight Mark Cook kids, twenty-one Spouting, and four GMS. Our after-school care right now, actually with the two, it'll make fifty-five students, preschool through eight. We have thirty in the morning for Mark Cook, or in the afternoon for Mark Cook, and eighteen students from Spouting, and five GMS. And so far, we're doing pretty good. Everybody's getting into a routine. Parents are, new parents are coming in. Learning all of us, we're learning them. So it's actually been pretty easy to take over this from Shalee. Shalee had it all very organized for me. So that is it. We'll see how many kids we can get this next summer. Hopefully more, but.
Angela, I talked. I mean, that's that piece of, you know, she's got a licensure and credentials and all kinds of things that go into how my kids we can have in certain spaces, how my staff can have with them. It's all regulated.
Each room has to be licensed. Everything has to be categorized for them. So they come in spontaneously throughout the year, check on us, and that's always fun. But last year, they came in after not being here for many years because of COVID and stuff, and all of my binders, his binders, were all checked out, and we were good to go.
Takes a lot to keep it up.
But all the staff does it for me reasons.
And I know she probably would never say this, but like as an old teacher, as parents, you guys are tired by three o'clock when we're ready to go home. These guys come in early, so they're right before school.
Six AMs.
They stay after school. By May, I'm ready to not see a kid for about two or three months, and she sees them all summer. So her and her staff are super dedicated Goshen. And I mean, those pictures and everything that she just talked about really show that. So I wanted, and she also helps me a lot with preschool. She got all my CPR stuff together. So she talked about the binders. So honestly, Angela is an amazing addition to Goshen. Plus, I know she brought some people here tonight. So you want to introduce them now?
You can do it.
Yeah, do it. Go ahead.
All right. So my staff I brought is Gail Parks. Just this way. She's been here forever. Ashley Drews. Caitlin Brown. And then I brought little Miss Charlie with me. She, this was her first summer camp, and she absolutely loved it. She was in before and after care last school year, and she is back with us this school year.
Charlie, what was your favorite thing about summer camp? Movie day. That sounds awesome. Was it really cool? Did you like going to summer camp? Yeah, I bet it was pretty cool.
He's just stalling because now he has to do.
Yeah, I don't know.
Charlie's like, quit looking at her.
I mean, pretty much going along with that, now you start, you know, Brian started alluding to, we start with our littles. So our preschool program, and honestly, I've been saying this now for a year. This is my second year doing it. I could not, I mean, all of this is great. It's definitely not a reflection on me. It's a reflection on all of our amazing teachers. And honestly, Mrs. Stevens, who is at the PTO meeting, but she really started a basis for our great program. But here's some, some stuff about our five-star preschool program. It is a high-quality early learning and development program. It's important because these experiences last a lifetime. This is where they start. They get their initial step into education, and they learn to become a warrior. And then they're going to take that through Portrait of a Graduate, all the way to when they graduate, and hopefully come back and either teach or just be part of our communities. Our preschool children enrolled in Goshen programs, we have approximately 1,892 days from the time he or she is born until entering kindergarten. Ninety percent of that, of brain development occurs before they actually turn six. So our preschool program is getting them when they're still able to be kind of molded, and they're doing the most learning. So I think that's pretty awesome. What happens on this journey in Goshen's preschool program, lay the foundation for success in school and life. And we were just talking about that with Portrait of a Graduate. So we, we are a step up to quality five-star rating. It's actually going to a gold star, or gold status now. So we're gold.
We're gold.
Really, what that means though is that the Goshen preschool children are in a program that has demonstrated the highest level of quality and early childhood learning from the state of Ohio. I'm not going to name any other places, but I mean, there's places that brag about being a one star, because that's still a great rating, but it's not nearly as great as what Goshen has. So we should be really proud, and you guys should be pretty proud, that our preschool program is a gold star, or well, gold status five-star.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so what does that, what does that actually mean? And here's everything that either we have to do as a program, what the teachers have to do, because to be a teacher is hard enough. To be a preschool teacher is even harder, in my opinion. Teachers have to develop lesson plans to support each child's individual growth at their learning level. We as teachers do that anyway. We try to differentiate for any child, but in preschool, it's mandated that each child gets a different type of learning. And so that's what we have to demonstrate to get that five-star. The administrative teachers have higher educational qualifications. A lot of them have master's or bachelor's degrees. All staff actually have to complete thirty additional hours on top of everything else they have to do. They have thirty hours of specialized training every single, I almost said year, every two years, they have to go through thirty hours of training on top of everything else to be considered a five-star rated teacher or program. Our program staff complete a variety of observation assessments to evaluate and improve learning experiences and keep track of students' growth. I could keep on going on and on and on about what five-star means, why it's awesome and all that. But instead, I actually, with the help of Mrs. Briggs, created a video, because like I said, I could stand up here and talk, but nobody wants to hear me talk. Everyone likes to hear our littles talk. So here is some of our preschoolers saying why our preschool program is amazing, and what it means to be a warrior.
Super cute.
And.
It's really cute.
That's a hard word.
That's what it means. Yeah.
So friends, if we're safe, respectful, and responsible, do you think that's being a Goshen warrior?
Yeah.
Anybody say, do you think it's a Goshen warrior if you're safe, respectful, and responsible?
Yeah.
Safe is meant to be, so you be careful.
So yeah, you're really careful. So you're learning here in preschool to be really careful. So being safe, you just told us that. That's part of being a warrior, is staying in your class, because if we're running around, that wouldn't be safe. Right? So what's something you can do to be safe?
Stay in the car.
Stay in the car? Hey, you definitely don't want to leave the car if you're still a little bit.
So and that's a way to speak out so you don't fall off.
That's really great. You speak out. Nora, what's a way to be safe here at school? Do you know something to be safe?
Not run away from your teacher.
Oh, gosh. Definitely don't want to run away from your teacher. So here's a hard one. Do you know what it means to be respectful?
Yes.
Being nice to others? Okay. How can you be nice to others?
We share.
You share. So you could share those cars that you were talking about, right? And how can you be nice to others?
You share.
You share. I love it. And here's the last big word, being respectful. What do you think being respectful means? That's a tough one. It is kind of like being nice again. All right, here's another tough one. Being responsible. Do you know?
Being responsible?
Yeah. So being nice or being strong for others? What happens if in preschool, you want to go to a different station, all your toys are all over the floor? What should you do first?
Clean up.
Oh, you should clean up and pick up. Do you do that every time?
Yeah.
Nice.
I do want to thank you guys for coming. I would like to have everybody come up and give you a little certificate and our Goshen pin for going above and beyond and doing all the small things, so. Come on up, even you, Charlie.
Come on, Charlie.
Even you, Charlie.
It's your time to shine, girlfriend.
Girl, let's shine.
You can stand by me. You'll be okay.
Oh, you got to ask. Never mind. Hey, Charlie, I forgot to ask you, who did you bring tonight?
Your mom and your dad? Very cool.
All right, well, here, Charlie. We'll start with you. And then you get a pin.
Mom wants to take a picture.
I don't worry if you're fully kept, but you'll figure it out.
Put it on your book bag.
On your book bag or something.
Smile at mom.
Turn to mom.
Smile at mommy. Thank you.
Kate, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's the little one doing?
Good. Justice mini-me.
Yeah.
First one was my mini-me. This one's justice.
Who'd you bring with you?
Yeah, who'd you bring?
Did you want a picture for two? Did you already get one?
She's recording.
Thank you very much. Prater.
I made it.
Great. Maybe you were sweating.
I was fine once I got here.
Thank you.
No, I do appreciate you guys coming out, sharing with the board, because I think it's important. And we shared back in August. I think Danielle did her presentation on the summer school and summer learning opportunities that couple with this, but it is a it's a piece that is a great service, you know, to the parents and, you know, parents and even staff during a school year to have the before and after school. And then preschool, if we don't have that, there's ninety kids that are walking into kindergarten without some of the supports they need to get going, so it's huge. And both those programs drive us to be in what we are as they hit kindergarten all the way up through, so. We do appreciate everything you guys do, the part that you play in the littlest ones' whole school year, so thank you guys for coming today.
Can you scoot closer together for a picture?
Act like we like you.
That's right. I know you spent a lot of time together. One, two, three. You want to come up here and take one? One more.
She's scooting up. Hold on. Oh, did you already get yours?
Yeah, she got it.
Big smile.
As a parent, I have to say, I commend you all. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much, everyone.
I just want to say too, on behalf of the Board of Education, seriously, thank you for all that you guys do. My daughter, I took advantage of preschool when they were little, and it does kick them off in a manner that is unmatched with what we could do at home, especially as working parents, so. Thanks for all the time, effort, and energy that you put into our littlest four years. So at this time, usually those who participate in this first part, we give you the opportunity to stay if you'd like for the rest of the meeting or go if you really want to hear all about the rest of the meeting.
Have an early wake-up call.
Thank you, guys. Come on, Charlie.
It's like the cutest little dress.
Thank you guys for coming.
Right, moving on to Agenda Item 7A, Old Business Facilities Update. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick ones. I have the picture up there. This is not, this is a graphic representation. I did trick Mr. Schinkel. I shared it to him. He goes, "Look how they got it done." Representation. So I do want to thank Mr. Smith, Mr. Schinkel, Fisher Homes in Goshen Township for their collaborative efforts. This is the sidewalk back by the tennis courts that will now attach. There will be a crosswalk and a culvert filled in, and it'll attach to the sidewalk, going back to that new neighborhood. As we got looking at it, if you get three hundred homes back there, little ones wanting to cross the street, it wasn't really a safe way. So there will be signage, flashing signage probably eventually, but a crosswalk signage there. We'll have to investigate what that looks like from a district standpoint as we get houses and kids back there, but we at least, Fisher Homes is footing that side. Goshen Township is taking care of the signage. So it's a nice collaborative effort to make sure that we've got a safe way across the street back there. That should be done. They said, estimate, they're just fitting it in by October-ish is what they're saying, so.
So in the future, will we look into having like someone maybe be placed there if there's many children?
I think you're probably going to have to. I mean, right now, ideally, we don't like kids walking off campus. Can't control it all the time, but we'll definitely, if we have a lot of kids going back, we're going to figure something out. Maybe a crossing guard. There's started to talk to other districts that have similar things, and that's eventually what you have to get to.
Okay. I just think that road, people travel very fast because they're not used to the.
Well, and that's the thing. I think there's got to be a study down the road of will you, what, become a school zone during certain times of the day? They've got to do some traffic study and that, so eventually we'll get to that, but first step is if we can get them across safe. Because they're going to cross, so I'll figure out working with the county, because that is county or township and the county. I'll have to work together to figure out how they do that traffic study, so. And then next, we shared with you Mr. Schinkel's report last month that we had three of our four buildings that received Energy Star. We, after Spalding kind of, I'm not going to say failed, but didn't reach the list, we kind of went back through, looked at the modular and what impact it was having to see if we could add any efficiencies on those. We did figure out that we could add some efficiencies with that modular. And we were able to get designated Energy Star back there. So, you know, we sat in a meeting today with M Corp, and they were talking through all the automated logic, all those changes that we have, remember, it's about a two, three-year process of getting all of our technology and the ceilings up to code so that, you know, we're not crashing and burning last minute. But all of that capital improvement investment, as we look at that, has saved taxpayers about 1.8 million since 2008. So if you kept your energy bill where it was and did nothing, energy prices have obviously continued to go up, but had we not made those, you know, if we don't look at that and make those types of investments, as we used to say, it's just money's going out the chimney, so. I think, you know, kudos to Mr. Schinkel for starting that, Mr. Edwards back then, but we're going to continue to keep it up. The meeting we had today, it sounds like the final, all of that work should be completed by January of 2026. So they've got a lot to do this winter. Well, they're going to start in Spalding this winter. They've run all the communication this summer, so all the communication wires are to where they need to be. Now it's changing out all the products. So we'll do some over Christmas break. They'll do a little spring break. They'll hit it really hard over summer break next year with the hope of finishing up Christmas break next year with all of that, so. I think we're in a good spot with that, to keep being able to monitor our systems and also be able to control them, you know, on shutdown and whatnot. So it's a big piece, you know, to have four buildings meeting that Energy Star certification is it's a tribute to a lot of people, put a lot of time and effort into it. Anything to add to that, sir?
No, I mean, really, you know, I think you guys have seen Ken Yaki in here a couple of times, and Ken is really just a mastermind to help kind of develop a plan, you know, and probably the biggest, one of the biggest things is when we put these LED lights, I mean, you see these lights, this is district-wide. We've had maybe two go out this whole time since we put them in, and it used to be we changed probably a hundred and fifty ballots this summer. I mean, just so many. So it's really, it's been, it's been great to do, because I mean, 1.8 overall at time, you know, that's about a hundred grand a year. That's a couple of teachers that's making a difference, you know, I mean, that's, so it's really been a good investment, and it worked out really well for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Scherzinger, do we have anyone signed up for public participation? This is A. All right, moving on to Item 8, New Business C, Treasures Report.
All right. I'm going to sit unless you guys want me to stand.
Up to you.
I'll point everything. So on this, you know, last month, we had the new, this little presentation here, and this is month number two, so if you look, beginning balance is going to be the same in every one of these, fifteen million, one seventy-three. That's what we started this calendar, I mean, our fiscal year off with. So far, year-to-date, we brought in nine point eight million. We have spent five point nine million. Our current balance is nineteen million dollars, which, if you look, August ending fund balance is three point eight million to the good right now. So that sounds good. I'll show you later kind of what transpired, but if you think about it, we're settling on a quarterly income tax, and then also our semi-annual real estate taxes all at the end of the year, so it's a bigger collection for those two months. Next month will not be as near as this. Oh, you're good.
Moving on.
So on that, so just on the forecast, we've received, like I said, nine point eight million of the budget, thirty-nine million, so the amount remains twenty-nine. So we've brought in about twenty-five percent of our revenue, and as you can see, the month's clear. So far, we're sixteen, so about eight, you know, eight percent per month. So what I was talking about earlier, like, you know, we showed the three point eight, and this is where we was in July. I just threw that up there. Our beginning balance, we brought in six point six, spent two point five, a hundred and nineteen, so we was four point one million dollars. So we've already dropped three hundred thousand, and I mean, like, it'll get bigger, you know, I mean, until we have another settlement. Percent of annual budget expended, right now through August, we spent five point nine billion of the annual budget. The budget total of thirty-eight, and the amount expenditures remain is thirty-two, so you can look on there about the expenditures for most part kind of stay, you just buy like twelve, I mean, it's close to what that is to like the fifteen percent. That's usually a pretty good indication. You take our salary, it's like twelve months and that sort of thing. So it kind of stays in line. Now, we do have bigger expenditures, like my parent debt payment, a couple of things, but for the most part, it stays right in line. Year-to-date are for total revenues this year, or last year, rather, fiscal year twenty-three. Through this, up through August, we had eight million dollars. This year, we brought in nine point eight, so we're up one point eight million compared to last year, which is a twenty-three percent increase. So over here, year-to-date change, where did that one point eight, where did it come from? The biggest thing is our real estate taxes. You know, everyone's bill came out, big increase. The state part is the homestead rollback, and then the other is up a little bit because we went out and paid for a lot of the summer jobs that we were doing, like the blacktop and that sort of thing, so that was the jump there to make up for that one point eight million. So over year, for the month of August, our expenditures dropped five hundred thousand compared to last year's three point three million dollars, or an eighteen percent increase. So out of that increase of five hundred five thousand, where was it at? Our salaries and benefits is relatively right on the same, which is three hundred twelve under. Our purchase services, one point four six. Our other is the other one, which is basically a lot of the repair work that's being done out there. You know, ranting on there a little bit, sorry. So again, what this is, is we're comparing how we're looking at the end of the year, so. Prior's ending fund balance, we got to fifteen point three. We're budgeted to end at fifteen point nine, which is roughly seven hundred fifty-three thousand, which was there is a hundred and fifty-two days, fifty-two days of cash on hand. So that makes sense there, most hands. Then finally, I believe, it's our budget amount expected year-end fund balance, we're projecting fifteen point nine. How this is trending so far, this is all formula-driven, the five-year forecast, it's trending that we're going to have seventeen million out. I'm always cautious on, you know, on how that trends out there, but that's what we're looking at, so for 2024, we're expected to pay a fifteen point nine. Our current trend estimates a favorable trend of one point one million dollars for year-end, so that's what's on our five-year forecast.
So Todd, on a couple pieces of that, when you think about that, like I met with legislators a week ago and started talking about the biennial budget, kind of what we're hearing is, don't expect your five and six of that fair school funding to be funded. Then you hear property tax revision, so there's so many unknowns in that, that it's assumptions. It continues to be assumptions. You've got that because there's a lot of things that come into play on that. We'll wait, kind of wait and see. We'll continue to, you know, from my seat, and if I feel like at some point you guys need to get involved with letters to legislators, we will. Very good conversation with Claremont County Superintendents and several legislators to talk about it last week. So we'll continue to do that. That's just some of those unknowns in there that we're at the mercy of those pieces. And just remember that fair school funding, don't think, remember, if we brought in more revenue from property, the less the state gives you. So someplace there is that, you had the crystal ball to tell us, but that's why, you know, it's a five-year forecast, and that's got assumptions in it, so.
Yeah, I actually made a note that says we're one point eight million up, but when does the state decide? When they're going to.
The biennial piece.
Decide how much we get after the real estate profits and such.
Is there estimated timeframe on the state?
I don't know.
The crystal ball.
When Mr. Bailey saw about, like, all the superintendents and treasurers met with the legislative, Mr. Edwards actually put that together, and it was very, very interesting conversations on what's going on. I mean, like, I don't think anything's going to happen until the election happens in November.
Yes.
A lot of political things going on there, I guess you could say, so.
But right now, being a hundred and fifty-two days, basically savings, we're in a.
Where we were last year, and it's kind of.
And we're in a good spot for a school district at this point. Or depending on what they decide, either way.
Yeah, and like we deal with frontline, who helps us with, I mean, it's a formula, I mean, it's a program for the five-year forecast, and so a lot of the treasurers, everyone kind of gets in there and asks questions. It's kind of the where do you think and where do you hear in type thing, you know, and it's even, I'll just use for example, the CEP, you know, it's brand new. A lot of districts are taking advantage of it. Now there's other districts trying to get in, and they extended the applications. So what's going to happen if everyone that's eligible does get it? I mean, that's, you know, some pretty big dollars. Is that going to, they're going to take those away? And they told us it's good for four years, but who knows? So it makes a really, really difficult time. So in here, just a couple of things that were just kind of off his tilt, or that's not a normal, like, expenditure, is our E-MON. We had a, our lease payment came up for the last, we're in our last year with that, so it was twenty-seven, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars for the modular. The lease, we got it at three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars, and semi-annual payment was at twenty-one. So our lease is up next year, fiscal year twenty-five, but we can do a one-year extension on that and keep that same rate going. So that'll be something on down the road that we'll really have to be sitting down, you know, like, long-term, I mean, what do, or, you know, work on that. And then a couple of things that was in this last one, like the summer projects, the band floor got repaired, the light repairs, our stage curtains, the message board, and then blacktop, which we had a lot more prior. I mean, it wasn't just eighteen thousand dollars to get everything, so, you know, filled and sealed up, so. That is about it on that. I don't know if anyone's got questions.
No questions?
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks for taking a look at that earlier, Todd. Thanks for correcting that earlier, too.
Yeah, well, thanks for finding that, so I appreciate that.
Or moving on to New Business C. Or moving on to new business C, financials, one through seven. Do we have a motion to approve new business C? One through seven. One through eight. Sorry, that's one through eight.
Second.
Discussion?
Just the two on there. I'm not gonna go into a ton of detail, but as we enter a new school year, we had some requests for transportation that was just not practical at this time of year with the number of students and really unavoidable disruptions to our current transportation. So in that, we discussed it with families and there is a, you guys are declaring, or we're declaring transportation impractical in my recommendation, and that families will be made whole in lieu of to pay them for their travel to that. And then the approval of the student as-needed salary schedule, that was really the student piece. We had that grant and we still have it. The grant partner lost their fiscal agent, which we were gonna do minimum wage and then the grant would pick up 99% of the kids. I was on the phone with them today. They think they've got it handled, but right now we had to adjust that student dollar amount back down because it's not financially responsible for us to do that. So you probably will see that again. We're trying to take care of the kids and give them, you know, you know, an experience through that work-study with the dollar amount, but we also need to do it through the grant, not through the general fund because that's just not, it would end up being a teacher and a half probably for student workers, which is not something we've done in the past. The point is to use the grant for that, which we will.
So they, they might have it?
Yeah, they've got it. Um, it's a, yes.
So once they get that done?
It's gonna be a different HR process because of the fiscal agent they're gonna end up going with. But yes, we'll have it. I don't know if it'll be, I'm talking to them today. We're working through the application with the students. They're looking to onboard them probably end of the month. I'd love for it to start like the 15th A in October, but we'll just have to see where they land with that. It's gonna end up being through Ohio means jobs is who's gonna be the fiscal agent.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, it is good. Yeah.
And that was a really good catch because, you know, that would have been, really, could have been a lot of money.
Could have been.
So, yeah.
Well, you know, it's
Diligent.
We're, we're trying to, it was, again, something that we're trying to do for kids to make sure that, you know, one, they're getting life experience, job experience, resume building and those types of things, which was part of that program. Just kind of went, hold on, we can't do it now. And we've gotta pick it back up. So you'll probably see me adjust that by November, hopefully.
Any further discussion regarding financials? Mr. Shiko, can you please call the roll?
This is Werke.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
This is Rare. Yes, this is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Moving on to new business D, Personnel, one through eight. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Discussion?
I would say this time of the year, that's pretty consistent with, you know, the normal yearly things, with some support staff. Teresa's doing a great job of adding some substitutes, daily substitutes, which is and then, um, I, I am excited. I think Stephanie mentioned that you have two brand-new teachers that took on freshman class about, to high school, which is a great way for new teachers to get involved with the kids. So it's great to see two new staff members take that.
I think their first experience at homecoming might rock their world because, you know, Goshe knows homecoming on a whole new level.
They were given the, yeah, they were given the float building directive.
Hopefully, someone's helping though.
New teacher training, I tell them. You've never experienced anything like this before in your life.
Like, uh, we do it on a whole
Yeah, it's a whole different level.
Three tents.
How many hours is that?
You know that, don't
Go in.
You gotta go find your own wagon and
You're hard.
Bails a stroll.
People looking for drive-by.
The floats are neat.
Flots are amazing.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Shiko, can you call the roll?
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
This is Rare. Yes. This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is Werke.
Yes. Moving on to new business E, Athletic Personnel. Do we have a motion to approve new business E, Athletic Personnel, item one?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
That's just, that's a stipend because it's something kind of unknown each year. We have enough, but we do have enough girls for JV tennis so that, you know, as we continue to keep that program, that's something that would then move into a supplemental, but currently it's a stipend.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shiko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Rare.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Steve.
Werke.
Yes.
Pep Rocky.
Yes.
New business F, Ms. Lanias, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'd like to thank Stanley's Driving, Stanley's Drivers Training for their donation of $500 for our Driver Education Scholarship. I'm sure we gotta thank you out to them.
And that is our, Stanley's is our partner for that grant that we got, $61,000. So we're in the middle of ramping that up, too, getting the right students. You know, there's some commitment there from a family standpoint to make sure they're gonna complete that program. They are, but we, we are appreciative of Stanley's for, that covers one, one kid each year. They may not have the means, which our grant will help with.
And they'll also support that grant?
Yes, they're, they're in that grant, yeah.
Is there gonna be an application or anything that parents should be looking?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, yeah, they're working through it, the guidance.
Okay.
That group, which students really, there's some guidelines there, just can't open it.
Right. The other discussion?
So I just, that, we traditionally have this from Stanley, or this is not the first year, so we usually have one, one student and now we have
Yep, one credit, yeah.
Several more through the grant plus this one, so.
61,000 should give us probably two to three years of students in that program, kind of goals, time or so a year, see.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Definitely a barrier for some.
Yeah.
Yes. How we need somebody to donate cars.
Mr. Shiko, can you please call the roll?
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is Werke.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare.
Yes.
Moving on to new business G, Policies for Approval. These are policies that we had first readings last month. Do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the graduation requirements and cybersecurity policy?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Those are the two policies we had last month, which is pretty much language change. Cybersecurity, that's the one that Mark and I have kind of worked through to make sure that we have all the parameters in place to follow through with that policy. So I think we're good to go.
Good.
Mr. Shiko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Werke.
Yes.
Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare. Yes, Gray.
Yes. Right, moving on to new business H, Board of Education Reports for Board Committee Roles and Liaisonship. Cory?
That's the report of the busy month.
Lisa?
So I just have one legislative report to share. Governor DeWine signed Senate Bill 49 into law. It's gonna go into effect on October 24th, 2024, and this is the Religious Expression Days going into law. And there's a couple of parameters for that that I'm sure that we will look at when we draft that, draft that policy and such. So, but that's the only thing coming from Columbus right now, other than they're not giving us more money.
Alyssa?
For student achievement, I will send an email with a link. So there's an interesting thing, our article in, the in-depth article about student achievement is on digit devices or like fidget spinners and if they're more harmful than good. So I don't know if that's really anything that teachers deal with in our classrooms. So it basically says that they may not really be that useful and they may not, students really may not need them is basically this. So that would be helpful to any student and a, or teacher in a conversation with parents, maybe, you could use this. And then there's a few articles regarding attendance and communication to parents. So I knew that's ongoing issues. I didn't gather anything new and informative that we're not already doing, but I, again, will send the links. You guys can read through it. And then in speaking with Mrs. Walker at the high school, the new cell phone policy, you know, definitely impacts probably the high school and definitely the sophomores, juniors, and seniors the most since it's really newest to them. I found it really interesting. So she did a survey for the students and then in the newsletter sent out some really interesting, good news things from the students. And I'm sure there were some complaints as well, but some of the things were, I checked out a book from the library for the first time. I'm reading for the first time ever. I finished a whole book. This was after like one week. So that's pretty good. You know, so more concentration in classes, being more engaged in across the board. I'm getting more engaged and paying more attention. My grades are great so far. I'm getting my work done and I'm focused more while at school. It's obvious there's a lot more involvement in classes. So, hey, you know what? I think, you know, that's, that's really great. And then she also surveyed the teachers for their feedback. So she's, you know, will definitely take that feedback and make some changes. So, I mean, just, you know, my survey of one, my senior, you know, she's, she's still alive and surviving. So her biggest thing that she's missing is music. And so, you know, just my thought is that, you know, maybe that's a way as a reward to, you know, pipe in music, you know, as a reward, you know, on a Friday or something like that. Because that just seems to be, you know, obviously, hey, music is probably, you know, not a way, not a bad thing, most music maybe, you know, but anyhow. So overall, great news. That is going well.
I did, as a parent, love to read those.
I did too, yeah.
Newsletters as well. Bill?
We had our Veterans Dinner that our senior dinner's gonna be in the spring and the spring play. So that was out of interest in that a couple of years ago. So grab that in the spring. Um, Great Oaks, we're, we're looking at remodeling Scarlet Oaks like we did Live Oaks this past year. I don't know if I mentioned that last month or not. Anyways, that's continuing, you know, ongoing. Let's go think about it. To just planning. See, our OSBA, oh, it's on here, our Fall Conference is October 10th. Not sure if we have let me get that in my Okay, okay, good. Do that tonight. And, uh, so, oh, ahead.
All right, so for my reports, Audit and Finance don't meet until January. I did want to see if there was any wiggle room in the policy schedule that you sent out. I know that Finance and Audit requested to be there on a November, in November. And I teach on Fridays in the fall, so I could make the December one, but I couldn't make November. So if there's any wiggle room in that, I'd love to attend as being on that committee. If not, though, I understand and definitely follow up with the minutes and figure that out. And then Community Staff Relations Committee along with Bill, just like to thank the whole PR committee and all the work that they do to host that. It is always a lovely event, a band for attending. That entire evening is, is always great to see our veterans come out, come for the game. And Goshe Education Foundation, we actually meet later this week. So no update from Goshe Education Foundation. And that's it for me. Any questions related to everybody's reports? All right, moving on, new business I, Superintendent's Report.
All right, so just last month, we had conversations about board compensation. And it was a good, I think, a good practice for us to kind of go through policy and practices. Did come out of that with a request from you guys about workshops, what other districts were doing. You can see up there that, you know, currently in the county, at least the ones that Todd, you know, got responses from that, you know, between board special meetings, what everybody does, committees and workshops. You know, there's, it's across the board that really it's just being board and special meetings is what is being compensated. With that said, I, you know, I, I think it's up to you guys. I just want to give you the options if you move forward with anything. I think this would be, you know, as I said last time, a vote to increase the amount of Board Service Fund that would happen at our annual organizational meeting in January. So when we do the organizational, if we're gonna increase to do any type of what number two would be, which is $60 a day, or for three hours, or 125 for a full day of attendance at board-approved trainings, we would just need to make that adjustment. So one, it would be voting to change, you know, the amount, which we could discuss what that would look like. And then two, anytime we were gonna approve a training to be compensated a daily rate, we would need to approve that on a board meeting. So just currently, our practice with those has been, we operate underneath our travel policy for reimbursement, which is trail mileage, meals, et cetera, room and board. You know, I, I will say, we've got a board that is very active when it comes to OSBA, when it comes to regional meetings, when it comes to Capitol Conference, which is a great thing. And I can't speak for other boards because I'm not part of those districts and what they do, but, you know, you guys do attend a lot. So I think if you guys, you know, talk as you move forward, if we want to make changes, we'd do those in January and, you know, make changes as we went through to approve what different things you guys would go to. Questions on that? Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. Um, just real quick, I put on your table, and we'll go a little bit, I won't go too in-depth on these, but each year we do target areas and you've got a front and back, High Quality Instruction, Literacy, CCR, Technology, Communication, and Student Development. These two pages really are our big buckets for the year under those. Now, each of those, for Teresa, myself, Pat, principals, Todd, have a long list of action steps to get to these. Those are really our, our goals and action steps. But these are, as you look at High Quality Instruction and Literacy, where we're headed. Each of the buildings, we'll be meeting with each building on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And they have their own set of target areas that don't mirror these. They get down into what does that mean at their building? When it comes to high-quality instruction, when it comes to literacy, when it comes to college and career readiness. So these are really our overarching, as we look at it, making sure that we've got, you know, really our big areas that we're making sure we're paying attention to. There's a lot of small pieces that go on behind it, but it also gives our buildings a direction for them to continue to stay on the same path. So we don't start going left or right at different buildings. We all kind of stay on, on that district path so that we can support it from a central level so that you guys can support it as a board of education. I would say that probably in the spring, I would have a little bit of a goal of revisiting this with you guys as a board, these target areas, and kind of going through an exercise, because we've been working on these for five or six years. Not saying, I mean, you can change the title of it, but making sure that we're heading in the right direction. Obviously with some input from our community as well, but this is kind of the direction that's set for this year. I'm not gonna read these to you. You can take them home if you got questions. But I've already talked to most of these, and I'll cover a little bit of these tonight in my goal session as well, as I set my goals for myself as well. But as a reminder, each of these have a long list of action steps that fall into this so that we can make sure we're supporting PK12. Questions on target areas?
I think student development, I'd like to see just more put around that, just the mental health aspect of it. I think I'd like to see that a little bit bigger than, you know, I'd like to see it as big as college readiness, because I think that's, I, I mean, every day you're seeing a struggle, you know, every day you're getting, you're seeing another I, I mean, every day you're seeing a struggle, you know, every day you're getting, you're seeing another report. Every day you're seeing, you know, something going on with, with the youth. And so to me, and maybe it's just small because it is, but I'd like to see more mental health coverage and talked about, you know.
And I can give you guys an update on that, I think that's probably, because that, that corner does not do justice to what we do as far as the supports that we have in place. And it's probably a good, you know, piece, because sometimes you maybe take, take for granted that what that piece is going, but the number of supports. And I, it does ring true, I mean, that's, it was honestly a two-hour meeting as county superintendent to a child focus, one of our mental health support providers, and what we're looking at as a county. And then, I mean, it's a, it's a constant with Mr. Turfening, Mr. Turner, what we're doing as a district from Catalyst, Child Focus to, you know, the intern pieces, and then what we can support here and how we, you know, I think the one big thing with that from our staff standpoint is it's building relationships with kids, and that continues to be the message on that. We're building relationships and every kid has a champion or every kid has somebody to go to, we can support that. But there are a lot of other needs that arise and, you know, I'll be happy to give an update on that. It generally, Cory is probably, we'll have Mr. Turner in to kind of talk about that as in one of the presentations. It'd be good, it'd be good to kind of fill you guys into about any changes we've made this year as we're working through that.
I think it's just the, what Cory's saying, even the efforts that are going on in the school that so many people don't know about unless you're involved in some way, shape or form. But I know John's doing a ton of just unique little different things of partnering, which would be really great to hear more about. But yeah, highlighting it maybe more than just one bullet point overall, which especially if we've been doing this for about five years, it's definitely, since COVID, it's, you know.
We hear, we hear about it, you know, the other day, we heard about it on our board retreat, right? A lot of people, you know, realize that.
Yeah. Well, and I, I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the partner we have out in the audience that reached out to me about how he can utilize his organization to support some things in school and work. You know, it's one thing for us to make sure our staff's on the ball with it, it's also getting some parent engagement and this and some conversations. I think that's kind of what eventually we'll lead to, but, and that'll be a good place to showcase some of that too. I like you.
Not to overshadow your lovely treasurer's report, because it's a great addition to our meeting. However, maybe that would be something we could, we can have it, but maybe we could kind of highlight one of these areas as well at each board meeting as well.
You're kicking me out if that's not fair.
Might have to like, you know, go a little. Yeah, a little cut ears down when we have one of these.
Or partner with like student achievement, right? Like every other month, do like a building student achievement, but on the opposite months.
Then you have the version as a treasurer's report.
Yes, I can talk all night, you guys won't be.
No, no, I said every other month.
Perfect, I appreciate that input. And then, Mr. Rare. Bill, on, next, yeah, on the October 10th Southwest Inter, Bill's gonna be honored for receiving the OSBA aptitude award.
Oh my gosh, I got it.
Yes, just, I, I think from that side, I don't know if Bill wants to give us the score, but he had to take a multiple choice test over six leadership areas of boardsmanship, vision, policy, accountability, community engagement, relationships and advocacy. And I know that that's part of the STAR award that board members, you know, putting time in. But, you know, Bill, all of you guys, I do appreciate everything you guys do as board members. But Bill, going above and beyond, I'll give you the newest.
Thank you, sir.
And they will honor him.
Thanks for sending me to London the ticket, Seth. It was actually before we, yeah, we were, we were in London, I was like, I have to take this before this date, you know? And yeah, so I was, I took it online while it was, yes, it was good.
Do not turn in your receipts.
Yeah, I did not, yeah. I didn't turn it, I didn't turn in that expense report there, yeah.
Again, congrats, and we'll, we'll sure that piece of October will be good as well. Speaking of that, I do need to get a head count for October 10th, so that we can make sure that we get RSVPs. That is at Laurel Oaks on the 10th. I mean, it's five to eight-thirty, but I think you guys all know, registration kind of begins center around six-ish and depending on the updates they provide, seven-thirty, seven-forty-five, I never see that date, but we'll see. So get a head count there.
Yeah, I'll be attending.
I'll be there, I have to be there.
Yay. I can.
I've got football practice, but I will see if I can have Brian do it. Hang on. Lisa, you.
Yes.
And then similar, similar, OSBA Capitol Conference, we have done registration, because after we register five, you're, you can bring as many as you want. So, but I do need, September 17th begins the room and board piece, so I do need to know who is gonna be there for that Sunday and Monday room piece, so that we can get rooms reserved on the 17th. Down the row.
Yep.
Everybody Sunday, Monday?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'm good.
And we actually, school is closed on the 11th.
Correct.
So it's nice.
You guys, this is random, like we put in and get, it's like we get the call, pick what we get. We try, though, we've been doing good.
I'm gonna tell you, there are pressures involved in that that nobody knows. Because they, they open the window, and if you're not clicking the button, why not window?
No door on the outside.
Everybody, every board and edge, every board and administration in the state of Ohio is clicking that same button at the same time and trying to get the lottery, so. That's all it is.
Probably like Taylor Swift. We love competition.
Hey, I got, I got, I got the T-Swift.
Also, on the 11th, at Capitol Conference, we have to wear our colors that day.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, do we wanna have red and gray?
Red, gray, ready, gray.
I just wear red and gray.
On the 11th, you guys, you probably got your update on Capitol Conference, a little brochure too at some point. And I'll send out info as we, as we start to get it as well.
Just a golf shirt.
You guys have, I, I, if you guys.
That'd be cold.
I mean, we have. I think we all have a Goshen wear, yeah.
I think we're. Desmond might design us some.
Oh man, we're supposed to, I'm just throwing that out.
Desmond might design us some Goshen ties or some.
No, thanks for the Goshen tie. Just kidding, he can get a Goshen bow tie or tie.
I do have two quick others, I did get this invitation yesterday, I think it goes to a little bit, but Bill was saying their ground, they're doing the groundbreaking at the upgrades at Laurel Oaks, if anybody wants to go, Monday, September 23rd at one. And again, that's groundbreaking for that, that's gonna house the EV technician and construction technology programs there. And then I do not have a slide up there, because it came to me earlier today, but we will be announced between myself, Chelsea, Mr. Edwards and Mrs. Sligo put in for a Connect Claremont grant, and we won it. It was $10,000 to upgrade our GNN, our state network, so that we could continue to help with that mission of Connect Claremont's piece. So we will be in the process of seeing what that looks like, we did not have to turn in a full list of that. So now it's gonna come down to what can we do with that, so that's huge. So, and I, again, collaborative effort between PEF and Chelsea with her connections, Mr. Edwards, Mrs. Sligo. It was a winner, so that's awesome. And that is all I had.
I did register for the delegate webinar.
Oh, yeah.
On October 30th.
Yes.
So I will be sitting there with my popcorn, learning all about being a delegate, see if there are any changes from last year.
Correct. Any questions related to Superintendent's Report? All right, moving on to new business J, executive session, do I have a motion to move into executive session, which follows the guidelines considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee or regulated individual, unless the employee, official, licensee or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This is just for myself and Mr. Shankle's poll setting conference, one of the, I'm not, this is off the.
There were a few goals, so there will be no action taken on it here.
Correct.
Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
This is Werke.
Yes.
This is Pepper Rocky.
Yes.
This is Rare.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Great. We staying here or we're? Thank you all for attending.
This is Rare.